This is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Geouin. We've been here in Geouin for ten years, serving the needs of families like yours with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, um, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Geouin and Fayette. So come see me.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Geouin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at 205-468-4625.
Uh, I'm Rick Chambers with Marion County Funeral Home and Spry Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Dwayne Cochran, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes is guaranteed to be there.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Geouin to Soligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Hey guys, this is Nick Jackson at New Heights Church in Hamilton, Alabama. I just wanted to extend to you an invitation to come check out one of our services. We start at 11:00 AM on Sunday mornings and 7:00 PM on Wednesday night. We're all about abiding, arming, and awakening. Also, we have a nursery ministry and a children's ministry as well as functional on those Sundays. Our youth gather together on Wednesdays. Come on out and see what it's all about. We'd love to have you.
Hamilton Metal Roofing located at 291 County Highway 25 in Hamilton. We sell 29 and 26 gauge roof metal. We have all types of trim and screws for you to complete your projects. Call us with any questions. Open Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Call us at 205-921-7100.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Well, my name's Vince Hughes. I'm the owner and pharmacist at Hackleburg Pharmacy in Hackleburg, Alabama. We're located here on Highway 43. Here at Hackleburg Pharmacy, we have state-of-the-art technology to ensure accuracy and efficiency to effectively help us provide you, the patient, with the best pharmacy services available. We carry a variety of products, from a full line of vitamins to knives and knife sharpeners. We're open Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM until 5:30. Phone number is 205-935-3392. We'd love to be part of your healthcare team.
... decision we make, uh, big place in under you. You know, we just ask you to forgive us for what we've done. And I'll listen to what Jesus say. Amen. Amen.
... electrically just food flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin, I'll thank all of y'all for being here. I've got a room full. But, uh, we usually don't do this, but this usually just don't come around very often. I'm gonna ask everyone in showing courtesy to the folks that lost their life in the 911 for us to stand and take a moment of silence for those folks. And remember today for all the people that lost their lives and I'm thankful for those kind of people and I think we need to take a moment of silence. First thing on the agenda, uh, I need a motion to approve the minutes for the August the 28th regulation meeting. Greg made a motion.
I said, Larry second.
Larry second, all in favor? Next thing on it is a recommendation for the approval to apply for federal and state funding for the FY '24 fiscal year for Marion County Ranks and Fight Airport. I think Chris takes care of that. We do it every year. You want to say anything about it, Chris?
Yeah, um, I was planning for Courtney, our engineer from Gargoyle Beach, here to build any questions, but all we're asking for this morning, and like Keith said, we apply for this grant for the airport every year. It's a ninety-five percent match, or excuse me, ninety-five percent funded, five percent match for anything that we do. And then, so all we're asking for this morning is just permission to apply for this grant.
And Chairman, Courtney is on her way here this morning, uh, so she's making a minute later if y'all want to go ahead and have her get some more detail once she gets here.
Yeah, we'll put it out for y'all to go ahead and try. I think we'll have to approve. I need a motion to accept this.
I make a motion.
I said, make a motion.
Second.
Tim's second, all in favor?
Sorry about that. You guys have any questions? What did we discuss?
We just approved it, so we really don't need to speak, but if you want to tell them what your plans are.
Sure, sure. So, I, as with all of our other airport projects, they're ninety-five percent funded externally, five percent locally. Um, we are finishing up the second phase, we're finishing up the first phase of our wildlife fencing project that you guys started, I guess about a year and a half ago. Um, we'll be moving into phase two of that shortly. Um, and then this '24 project is an airfield electrical project. Um, what that will consist of is removing all of the existing electrical equipment at the airport, uh, the runway lights. Um, we're looking at possibly lighting the taxiway as well. Um, those will be moving from the incandescent system that you currently have, upgrading it to an LED system, um, all new components within your vault. Um, so it will reduce your electrical footprint, um, reduce the, the cost of electricity at the airport, which likely isn't overly significant, but it, it will be a, an improvement in savings there. So that's what we're looking to do in '24. Um, like you said, right now, all we're doing is approving the pursuit of that project. Um, we'll move into designing it and bidding it. We'll likely get approval to proceed sometime in early December. Um, that's when we'll begin the design process and then we'll follow the same procedures that we have in the past. We'll be bidding it sometime in the April, May area and then getting a grant, um, midsummer of '24 and then proceeding with, with construction after that based upon an award of a, of a grant. So, any questions?
Thank you for everything you've done for us.
Absolutely. Thank y'all for letting me work for you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is consideration for the official closure of Mitchell Road. I think we have a lot of people. Uh, I guess the first ones that want to close it, Scott, would you like to say something?
Oh, Chairman, I think we should give, yeah, the, the ones that are pro closure, opportunity to speak first if they have a spokesperson that would like to speak and then, uh, just get down as well.
Do I stand?
What, what ever had you wanted?
Oh, we got, I think I made a dozen packets and we'll give each one of them one and anybody that's interested. What you'll find in the packet is a timeline, pictures of the road at various stages. You'll also have a, a flash drive included in the packet that y'all can listen to at your convenience. It was of the meeting that took place at our cabin July 3rd with, uh, Greg and Chris. They asked for a meeting to resolve the matter and so I said, sure, we'd love it. And so we met. But anyway, if you open the packet, the first page is the timeline. And then, um, early part of 2021, uh, I had just purchased land for my sisters to add with what I already had. And so, um, we were looking at what we was going to do with the property and, and I noticed one thing and then the people that had tried to look at the timber, even look at the land to purchase it, they had tore up their vehicles trying to, trying to look at it using the supposedly county road, I guess it is, we'll call it that. But it was so bad that they couldn't really get into it. These were timber people. So, I made a request to Mr. Dale Holt. I said, we need some help. We need to get that road back into shape. I'm thinking about using it for a campsite. We're going to repair the, the lake down and get it going again. But I said, the road's bad, really bad. And he was, I was kind of taken back at what he said. He said, that road's not my responsibility. I said, you know, excuse me? He said, no. I said, that's not my responsibility. What, what he said next is confusing and I'll just tell you what little I know, that maybe y'all will understand what he was saying. He said, we can call the road, and he's talking about from, from 48 down to the place that I was working. We could call it your driveway and I'll send a grader down there, but I'm not really working that road. And I did, like I said, that's about all I know about that. That didn't make any sense, but, uh, the grader never got there. It broke down before it come. So, what, what's happened on that road, I haven't got a peed gravel of help from Marion County.
Nothing.
So everything that you see has come out of my pocket. Um, and if you want to look on page six of the handout, that's the road we found, or lack of road, however you want to put it. And this was a new creature to me. I'll be honest with you. I'm from, uh, I went to school here, graduated in '72 from Hamilton. My wife, Bernice, she graduated '72 from Phillips High, so we're kind of from up here, but we left, uh, going to Tuscaloosa and that's where we've been for the last few years. But I'm a real estate appraiser and I've appraised men through my company about twenty thousand properties. I have never used the term unmaintained county road. That don't exist where I'm at. If the county owns it, they maintain it. If they claim it, they maintain it. If they don't, then it go, it's a private road and it's up to individuals, groups, or singular to, to, to maintain a road. Um, this is, just look through here. Uh, page, uh, six is how we got it, I think. Uh, and then, as we started working on it, I said, Dale, is this road closed? He said, yes, sir, it's closed. I said, so would you put me a road closed sign up on it? He said, I'll do that. So on page seven, I couldn't get a picture before somebody, it may have blown down, it may have been torn down, he put up a road closed sign. At that time, I said, well, because I wouldn't count off what was going on, I wouldn't really sure. So I made a call and, and let me ask you this, because I don't know. If the road commissioner refuses to work on your road, what's your next step? Where do you go?
Well, I think it's pretty evident, uh, where it went with Mr. Dale, he got beaten.
So you have to wait to the next election?
I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying.
That's what you're saying? You wait to the next election and hope the guy does it when? Is that what you're saying?
I'm just, I'm just saying that, that...
Could I come to Keith? He's the chairman and I say, Keith, he ain't doing his job. Need to push on it? What, what do you do?
I think, I think you, uh, you probably nailed it on the head there. If, if you're not getting stuff that you're not doing, I think you need to contact and get on the agenda and address the problem and, and we'll see if we can figure out what we need to do on it. Because you get, you get in a lot of these, these driveways, is it driveway or is it road? Or is it always been a road or is it always been a driveway? And, uh...
No, this wasn't a question. He wanted to make it a driveway. It was a road, supposedly. It's on a mouse.
Well, we, we've got an engineer here and what we'll do is listen to your side today while you want to keep it open. Am I right?
Yeah, and I talk, I, I get angry when I talk about this because I start out with a good, you know, jovial personality. It just makes me mad the way I was doing it. So I'm sorry about that, but let's go on.
That's fine. Uh, I think, let us know why you want to keep it open and what needs doing to it. And then we've got people that want to close it.
We're the closed. We're the closed.
Close, right. I got you. Okay.
I'm sorry, did I jump in the wrong category?
But for said that and then we'll let our engineers and we'll all come up with a decision and try to make the right decision for everyone.
So the next thing I did, I made a phone call, several, to Scott Hunt, who I never got through on the phone. I sent a text message to him. That is on page two.
I get that a lot. James is stalling now.
My text message. Scott, this is Grant Mann who had a question about the county, how the county is going to, um, going to handle roads that have been declared abandoned. And that's the word that Mr. Holt used. Right now, uh, we're trying to tie into the county road south of my land, building a bridge and clearing out an old road bed, uh, over, grown over with trees. It's costing me thousands. Should have worn my glasses. Since the county won't help with, uh, with me, I am, am I within my rights to close the old Mitchell Road running through my property? It is quite dangerous now in sections with deeper ravines and even someone on the ATV could get hurt if not careful. If I cannot close road, is the county assuming responsibility? If anyone gets hurt or on that part of the property, my part of the property that I do not intend to repair? Without some guidance, my plans are to fence off the Mitchell Road going east-west through the property and tend to the road going to the lake that we are repairing and the site we may build a weekend getaway on. Please contact me at your convenience. He texts me back. Mr. Mann, I'm sorry for not getting back to you, but feel free to do what you want. Mitchell Road is no longer a public road. Okay. If I got this message in Tuscaloosa, I would get two things out of it. I could do what I want and it's a closed road. It's no longer a public road. Now, I don't know how to interpret things up here. So I, I come up here, now this is, this is on writing. That's very important because it's court admissible. Uh, you've watched the Murdoch trial, they sent him to two life sentences based on his texts. Uh, what we got here is a statement that I relied on and I continued the process through the road relying on the statement. Now, my other question is, when I have a legal question of how the county would handle the roads, who should I have contacted?
The chairman of the commission.
The chairman of the commission?
And then he would...
Not, not the county attorney for a legal question?
He would, he would, he would recommend to talk to him is who you would contact though. Instead of calling him, just call the chairman and then they would recommend to him and the engineer.
How, how long is this road?
I don't know how long Mitchell Road is all set.
That's the thing. I don't, I don't know. There's, you know, there's five districts and Dale is not here to defend himself or say what he done. I don't know how this was looked into. I don't know if Chris was the engineer when this took place. That's another thing to take into consideration. Mike Shaw was prior to this.
I'll, I'll speak a little bit.
Okay, Scott can speak on their behalf.
What Mr. Mann is speaking about, he had a conversation with Dale, Mr. Holt. And then at some point in time, Mr. Holt had a conversation with Mike Shaw or County Mayor. They get back with me, Mr. Mann had contacted me somewhere in that timeframe because either Mike or Dale had used him to me. And so, um, once I got all the information, that's when Mr. Mann sent me that, that message. And every indication I had from Mr. Holt and from Mr. Shaw was we had not maintained that road in over twenty years and that we don't consider that county road anymore. There wasn't a road sign up. There was nothing to that effect. And the original question with Mr. Mann, and from my understanding was, I may have this road number wrong, was 289?
199.
The road in...
199. 199.
189 because it used out in, into the front of their property and there was a gentleman that had a house back there that they had a gate up blocking that. And from that point, when the gate owned through the woods, that road is just not passable. And so his question originally was blocking of that roadway so he could access the front of his property. And that, that is an existing county highway, 189. Um, and so that was where the original questions became, came through. And then this question about Mitchell Road came in because from my understanding, it runs through...
It runs through the front of this house. There's two sets of gates up there and one, one just off of, uh, when you come through the cut over, there's a set of gates and then there's one as you pass through a house to, to, to continue on Mitchell Road. My concern about all this is, is no landowner that joins that road has any access to their property except this road and he's got gates up blocking. I keep putting culverts in, there's two culverts that gotta be replaced. I cannot get to even putting culverts in that toward the timber people can come in and, and, and sell timber.
Right. And I understand that, but from what he's saying is absolutely correct is check with the engineer, check with the engineer and everyone said this road is closed. That's why I relayed that message to Mr. Mann and that's why he acted in, in doing so.
But it, but is it true in the state of Alabama before a road can be considered closed and should have a public hearing?
There's a couple ways. And one, if it's a, uh, a road where there's a dedicated, it's a dedicated road, we have to have a public hearing. But if it's a road that's basically been a road maintained for so many years, if it's not been maintained for that period of time, over twenty years, we generally deem it closed. And that was the situation with Mitchell Road.
And there is another access to the road. It's the back access.
Yeah.
It, it isn't like we closed a road that did not have a second access.
Does this road go all the way through?
It don't because it's washed down.
It does, but it, it goes through Barn Creek, which is washed out.
Well, I'm like Keith, I, I have no idea. I know about where it's at, but I have no idea.
It runs from County Road 48, which is a paved road...
To Grady Cole Road.
To, to Grady Cole Road. Connect there. Okay, they have their, so I put up 913, 914, 2021, I put up large iron yellow gates. I mean, these are not camouflaged, they're right there in the road, they're for everybody to see. And while we was doing this, we start, my wife, bless her heart, I love her, been married almost forty-eight years, but she's a prepper.
I'm not a prepper.
She's a prepper.
I just like to be all away from things.
Her whole dream for the last ten years was to get off the grid and build a place that would be self-sufficient in some kind of catastrophic event like a, uh, total anarchy, you know, fighting for food in the grocery stores, uh, shipping breakdown, supplies breakdown, solar flares that could cause outage of the total solar grid, et cetera, uh, that kind of thing. We built maybe the largest solar panel array in Marion County, if not the, it's, it's gotta be up there at the top. Um, because we don't want connection utilities.
It was going to be so expensive to get the power out there that this was a viable...
So we did something three times that expensive, yeah. So we, um, we're all, we don't have any utilities. We hooked up to natural water coming off the mountain, et cetera, uh, Star Net, Starlink, whatever they call it. This was, this was her thing, her project, and it got out of hand, way out of hand, but it did what it did. So all the time that we're sticking money into this project, this having, et cetera, was a year and almost three months. Nobody said jack, but we just keep putting money into it. And then all of a sudden, I get a letter from Chris Willbanks, county engineer, 12922, saying, whoa, you done put up a gate down there. I said, yes, and we did. He said, you gotta take that thing down. I said, you know, basically excuse me. And at that point, uh, you can go over to page three and that is the county engineer letter sent to me. You can read it. Uh, he declares, I gotta get the gates down because I've done interfered with these, uh, Mitchell Road is still an open county road used for the safe operation of vehicles under the supervision of Marion County. I consider that an embarrassing statement if I was Marion County. Look at the pictures. That's a safe road? It was safer with the gates up.
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
If Commissioner Greg there is willing to come in here and fix this road back like it needs to be, is it gonna, what's it gonna block you from getting? If the road is fixed, is it gonna interfere with what you're wanting to do out there?
No, sir, but he's not gonna fix it like I want it fixed. It's going to take, what Greg? If you fix that road like it needs to be fixed, the 48 always proves how?
All, all, outside of the bridge, uh, you probably do most of it in about week and a half's work.
With what?
About a week and a half's work.
And the bridge?
I said minus the bridge.
You're gonna fix the road?
You said, we're, we're talking from the creek back to 48. That bridge, I mean, it, it, it wouldn't be feasible to build a bridge across the, a creek that sometimes go probably as wide as this building during the wet months. I don't, I don't know where this at. I'm trying to call him. It come off Grady Cole and does, this road don't go up through the old battlefield? You can come in there. Right before you get there, buddy? Right before you get to it? Okay, I got you. I know where it's at. It's right across from, right across from Prentice and then it's the driveway. It's cut over there right now.
But Greg's definition of fixing the road and mine are two separate things. He's talking about putting a grader in there, not even a bulldozer, Greg.
No, you take, put bulldozer in there, cut all the roads back out and ditch your new route.
Okay, I thought at first you said you weren't going to, but never mind. It's gonna cost a good bit of money in time. You gonna put gray crushed on it like I've got?
No, we'll put regular rock on it.
Uh-huh. Yeah, and that sinks down that mud pretty quick, so you're gonna come back, come back in another couple of months, put another layer on it.
Slag.
Yeah. Um, anyway.
So y'all come in off forty-eight and y'all. Y'all gonna come up one eighty-nine?
We turned, we turned, yeah, we turned.
We made our own road.
See, the process of this, y'all, is when we found out that we was not getting any help from the camp, from the commission to build access on Mitchell Road to our property, we forked out the money to build a road from one eighty-nine to where Mitchell Road is. And we put in our own bridge, which was not cheap. So we built an entire road to hit Mitchell. And then from Mitchell Road to our cabin, we made it passable because I have a hybrid car that, I mean, just that slag stuff, it will, it, it won't work on that slag stuff. Because it, it washes away and it rubs the bottom of my car. I couldn't even get my car to the property. So we ended up putting the, the gray gravel on there because I can't, you know, I couldn't get it otherwise. And, uh, and we put in the money for that. And then on the Mitchell Road, we put into culverts ourselves. And we put gray slag from the, from the, where our, our driveway thing is, all the way to where our cabin is.
Have y'all had any trouble with timber companies? Do they own land and joining y'all?
They do. And they went there.
Have they been walked out and had to also?
No, because they went around it. They just, I said, y'all can't come through here. So I said, we'll go around that.
And they went around. And we have said, now, mind you, we've said, anyone that has property on this, if they'll just, we'll give them a key to the gate, all they have to do, the timber companies can go through. We just asked that they make sure that they put the gray gravel back on when they're through on our part of it. So it isn't even that we're blocking anybody. We done said, anyone who wants to go through there, will, you know, that has property, they can have their own lock on the gate. We don't mind that. At the beginning, someone did mention about doing some, uh, uh, timbering there. And I thought, we thought, that they wanted to go through our new road that had the bridge. And see, they could not have used our bridge. It's a, it's a bridge for a certain limit of weight. It, they would not have held it. But we said, no, you can't use it. I, I, if they were meaning the Mitchell part of it, I, I did not understand that when, when they talked about it. But anyone that wants to do it, we're gonna have some logging on it ourself and they're, they're gonna fix it back. So, I mean, it, we're not blocking anybody that has property. They can put a lock on there and go through there anytime they want to.
Let me ask you something. Suppose he fixes it. Suppose the road is fixed from Grady Cole Road to y'all's landline and is fixed from forty-eight to y'all's landline? Since y'all's got y'all's own road going into y'all's land. And it looks to me like this will satisfy everybody.
Yes, it would.
If you get two ends of this road fixed.
But that, that end of Grady Cole is.
Stay on.
You'd have to build a bridge across the.
No, the land, the bridge is on there in the middle there.
No, I'm talking about the bridge coming off of Grady Cole.
Oh, I thought it was right there.
No, it's Barn Creek.
It's Barn Creek.
How big of a, how big of a creek is it? How big, how?
It's the biggest building across the pond.
Well, I, I walked across it the other day and it wasn't very long, but it was not raining. Um, it would have to be, you talk about grading, you would have to find a place that was shallower and built. That's what we had to do when we built our bridge, is they couldn't do it on the flat part where the sandbar is. They had to do it on a, a different place.
Scott, it's Barn Creek, right there.
Oh.
Was it, this road has never officially been voted in closed, correct?
That's correct. I don't know that it's ever been officially voted in as a road either. But yeah, it's not a.
See, that's the problem. It wasn't done right. See, there's steps you gotta go through. It's gotta be run in the paper. It's gotta be public hearings. It's gotta be all this for it's closed. But you're talking about Mitchell Road has never been officially, an official county road?
As far as, you know, dedication to the county, no, it's just a road that we maintained for a period of time. But my understanding from prior commissioners was when that bridge at Barn Creek went out, it quit, we stopped.
Twenty, it's been over twenty years.
That's what.
And was, uh, was it fifteen year? You gotta maintain a road?
Yeah, three years ago by twenty.
I can show you a picture of the narrowest place of Barn Creek.
Did you walk him? I let him finish up.
When she said it wasn't raining at the time, it's not, at that point, it's not very good to go on for it. But that's, the road comes here and then.
How much traffic goes through this?
It's AT, there's no traffic can. I mean, you've seen the pictures.
Nobody go through that.
Uh, we, I took, I took, uh, uh, them right there and we had to stop by ATV because I couldn't go.
What I'm saying is, could you make a border if, if there's not a lot of high traffic so people can get to the land? If you had it fixed on both ends? I can, I'm good if I can afford it, we can go down there and build one.
What? Take, take two minutes and finish up and then we'll let these other people.
Yes, sir.
Cause the only problem we got is you can't land lock people out of their land. That's, that's.
We knew that.
Yes, sir, I, I.
And I don't know what all you were told. I hate you were told all this stuff, but.
Oh, I did too.
If, if you allow access through your property, that's not land locking it, is it?
The gates is not, not locking.
If they have a picture on it, it's not.
But these roads are, it's impossible anyway.
Yeah, I mean, they are.
Uh, anyway, I guess the next main event was Greg called and said, let's meet at the cabin and let's get this reconciled. And I said, come on. So, um, right before July fourth, July third of this year, we met at the cabin. And you'll s- and like I said, if y'all can go back to your offices and plug in the little, little flash drive and listen to the whole meeting. If you don't wanna listen to it, you can go to about sixteen minutes and thirty seconds and start it right there. And that's how it ended. There was, uh, components of it says that, uh, with your agreement, that I would have opened the gates and allowed curbs to go in, number one. That Prentice Hall would then be allowed to, uh, remove his timber, use the road, get his timber out, too. That the county would then help me get my road back into shape because it's gonna get tore up with the big log trucks. And then the road would be closed. That was the understanding. Uh, and you can listen to it on these things I just handed to you. I'm not making it up. We'll listen to it. And so, like I said, amazing thing happened after we met. The, the screen go ahead of him on the posterior so hard they forgot what we said. That letter that we agreed to, that I was gonna get from me and my attorney to look over, you know how many days that took to get to me? I'll let you know when it comes. Uh, all of a sudden, I, next time I get in touch with him, he says, oh, no, we still, we didn't say that. We said we would propose to close the road. I said, excuse me? I'm pretty good at nuances, throwing in little words and stuff. That wasn't what was said. Listen to the, listen to the meeting. And that's all I got to say. That's how it ended. And I don't know what the meeting was about. I don't know if it's just something they hadn't aggravated Grant in the last month. We need to aggravate him again. I don't know what it accomplished. It was just like, you know, we need to blow smoke up his skirt and call it a barbecue. It just, it didn't make sense.
All right. We'll let y'all speak.
Well, my family has owned this land for over a hundred years. My grandpa grew up on that land. That road has been there at least a hundred years. There's also a cemetery located on this land. Public, no longer has access to. We have been denied access to our land. I called Grant and I can look up the date and ask him about log trucks going through there. I was told a flat no, that it would tear up his road. Y'all brought up timber companies. There is a timber company between his second gate and my land.
And I talked to the timber company on that and he said he wanted to rub the state up my.
Yes, sir.
I called, I called and talked to him first.
They also, uh, is a hunting club that has a lot, large tract of land leased from this timber company. And they have been denied access to their land. They cannot hunt on that part of their land. Uh, we just, it's just been an ordeal. As was said, we live at the intersection where these two roads meet. And up till two years ago, when those gates were put up, there was traffic on that road. You know, I'll, I'll say it did take a four-wheel drive because the road is not in very good condition. But there was traffic on that road daily. Mr. Mann himself has used this road. He has hauled several loads of, of concrete, topsoil, the gray slag is to, I don't know if it went across it, but I know, uh, concrete trucks went across that, that road. This is our only way of accessing our land. It's just simple as that.
My property is completely landlocked. I have not had access at all. And I don't feel like I should have to have permission from somebody else to access my land. This road has existed forever as far as I'm concerned, way back.
He gave me a flat no when I asked about the log trucks going through there. If we.
Prentice, you said you understood.
We thought it was the other road, not Mitchell Road. Regardless, we shouldn't have to have permission to go down the road.
I shouldn't have had to fix the road.
If we put, if we leave those gates up, if this road's closing, we leave those gates up, what's to keep if any point in time them denying us access to our land?
If you have a key to it.
Hey.
But you could take.
Let, let them talk. Let's don't get into this because they, they, they honor, they respect the God. Yours may be.
I'll keep my mouth shut.
Again, at any time, they can just simply take the lock off and say, no more, no longer. And then we're.
If that road's closed, they're gonna wanna put a gate up right there on forty-eight. And that's gonna block us from getting access to backside of our property. Does one of those roads turn off and go back around and come out on one forty-seven? I think I've realized where this is at, what we call by the branch, you go down across right in front of your house.
Yeah.
Turn left, go down.
Oh, yeah. I know where you're talking about. I figured out who you was.
And I don't understand how, I mean, you've spoken about how if a road's not man, maintained, that you just abandon and consider it a closed road. Well, I mean, how can the county do that and not notify a landowner that you're closing the only access they have to their property? And if that happens, nothing has changed in our property tax to the, you know, it's still, we're still paying the same amount of money on our property tax. They haven't gone to zero since our land is worth nothing at this moment because nobody can get there.
I think probably what happened in this situation over a period of years is mainly loggers came out of there. I mean, they came from both ways, from over on two forty-one through there, getting that timber back on the backside. And you cross the branch, turn right, where y'all going to the way of the right in there. But it happens. People, people don't maintain it. There's not local traffic. And a lot of people tear it up and then it's just a headache to maintain, but, oh.
But it is still a public road.
The what?
It is still a public road, Rob, because we have land, I mean, we own land there.
I might be speaking out term, speaking for Greg, but I, I think Greg is willing to, for the road to be open and him fix it to where everybody has access to the property.
At least to, at least to the creek.
If, if the road is fixed to the creek, off, coming off forty-eight, right? I, I, I'm not familiar with all of this. Will all y'all be able to get to y'all's property?
Yes.
Yes.
I've done, that two culverts has gotta go in through that second gate. I've got one of them laying in Prentice's yard. I'm not gonna lie, we went down there to put it in and couldn't get through. And we drug it back up there to Prentice's yard just to keep from somebody stealing.
Is that first branch that y'all crossed, that's a ford down there? They've always ford down.
Yeah, it's, it's ford, but then there's two other culverts beyond that.
You go from, when you cross that ford, you go about a quarter or half and there's a road to the right and all the way back through.
There's a, there's a road that veers to the right. I think it's a hunting club through there.
It is, it is all the way through. And then you're going on to Barn Creek over there. And it, it's rock throwing distance, it's two.
It's, it's about, it's about three mile height from that, from that little second gate to the creek.
I know exactly.
Pretty close to that, maybe a little more. We walked it that day. And, and I have to, I have to admit, this lady right here to be her age, she'd pick them up and put them down a whole lot better than I thought. She had me and Chris more out. But, but in the end, I feel like, uh, for, for, for Prentice and them, everybody's, uh, land that joins us, I think it's best engage come down. Just because like Prentice said, at any given time, they could say, hey, we don't want nobody through here and they could lock it up. And then, um, you know, it, when, when they sell their timber, there's gonna be trucks. Who, who's gonna go down and lock that gate every, every morning at two or three o'clock? And one of them lying trucks come and get in and out? Who's gonna go close it up every evening when they leave?
Exactly.
So that's the issue that's posed here, you know, they're, they're, they can't even sell their timber right now because we can't fix the culverts where, 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 um, Mr. Reel can get in there and have people to sell the timber.
We sold another tract of timber several months ago when timber was up. We have lost a lot of money because timber has come down since we couldn't sell it. We've lost several thousand dollars because of this.
May I speak?
Are y'all, are y'all done? Well, would that solve the problem though if he, but if he, if he wanted to, if they're closing on their land, you fix both ends of this road? Cause they own a bit of this land around that in the middle. And if they can get to their land and then on the other side, they can get to their land. Cause y'all got a road to y'all's place that's there another way, right?
Yes.
Is there any land on the chair that's coming off the other side?
There's a short section of Mitchell Road that they have to travel off of. When they, when the new driveway they built, when you come off of one eighty-nine, there's a short section from there to their, to their house.
Y'all willing to maintain that section of y'all's land?
Yeah, we've already got slag gravel on it.
They done slag.
Said you can fix it all the way from forty-eight to right there. And you can go from Grady Cole Road to right there. And you got this section they own, all this little section right through there, through there. You can fix, you could, you could pretty much please everybody. I mean, cause they can get access to their land. They would have your same road opened up.
Now, we can't access our land from Grady Cole.
Now, y'all coming from forty-eight?
If the, but they would have to put.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. He gonna fix forty-eight to their land, to their landline. That's what I was asking. None of y'all own land on the other side of the creek too?
Well, I, the, the creek splits mine down the middle.
Yeah. But the, when, when this is man, y'all own this section, all this section of land, right?
Uh.
When I'm saying all this, all this section of land.
Yeah, part of it may be my, my, uh, to the east side, Tammy Mann Brown is my first cousin. She has that.
But what I'm getting at, if he can do this with both sides, be happy about this? If he can fix the forty-eighth side and go, uh, both ends.
And the Grady Cole side.
And the Grady Cole side, both ends of their land.
The gates are there, no.
No, I'm talking about he have to take the gates down and he can put the gates up on his, start his land.
It's on, it's on our land. The gates are on our land. No, the gates are on the road.
Yeah, the gates has gotta be somewhere else they can't get to their land.
The road splits their land as well, so.
I, I don't think, all right, if you, if you can fix the road from Grady, from, from Grady Cole to our gate, that's where, that, that, you'd ha, you'd have to do a bridge over Barn Creek. You'd have to.
But that, that, what I'm talking about on Barn Creek, it ain't y'all's problem, really is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But y'all would be accessing that because y'all got a road off one eighty-nine, right?
Yes, we have a road off one eighty-nine and we have, we have a gate where the property begins and a gra, and a, and a, a, a gate where it ends on the, on the west side of that road.
But what I'm getting at, the only gates will be put up is at y'all's landline.
Yes.
And the section in between, y'all take care of yourself.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we wanna do.
That's what solved the problem. Cause the gates, the gates.
Blocking that road. What I'm getting at is.
We can put gates at top of hill on the right when they cross forty-eight and down there, up where you get Prentice's, we can go to cross.
Now, what I'm getting at, nobody has to cross their land. If you go into your land, they can come back out on forty-eight.
No, they still got.
You still got the. No, they still got, you still got to cross, y'all still got to cross their land to get to your land.
To get to 48, you'd have to go through our land. To get to 48, you would have to go through our land. I'm saying, I'm saying you could fix it from, from our land to Grady Cove.
It's impossible right here.
The section of, the section of Mitchell Road goes in front of-
I don't know. I just have to look at it.
I think, uh, Greg can work with, with both ones and, and figure this out because we're not getting nowhere. I think what we need to do is get Chris, and like I said, Chris was not here when Mike Shaw was and this took place and with Dale and Greg's in it. And we'll find out the legal points on the road, uh, how long it's been since it's been maintained, was it ever, what year it was officially, was there any property to this road for a right of way, how much right of way this road claimed? That's something you need to know. Uh, may not have none. They may just put the road in, put a sign up. But we'll get to the legal point of it and let Greg get back with both, both parties and see if we can work it out and we'll, uh.
I got another question. Uh, I didn't get a notification, uh, about this meeting and I, last time I talked to Prentice, he hadn't gotten one and my cousin hadn't gotten one. And I don't know if anything has been sent out. And that was a condition of the, the meeting.
This wasn't a, this is not a-
This is not a public hearing. This is just a, just a meeting to, for us to take in what information we're getting from each party.
If, if it comes to, if we have a public hearing on it, it will be announced and run in the paper. Everybody be contacted.
Okay.
And all it takes is one person to oppose closing it and it stays open. So, I mean, that's, am I not right Scott?
But they should have gotten a notice for this.
But it is in the paper, but it's a-
It was in the paper, but we didn't get a notice. We didn't get a notice in the way.
And we are opposing it.
Well, I thought I remember seeing it in the paper.
It was in the paper.
It was in the paper and also it says section about written notices will be sent out and whatever.
You're here, that's the main thing.
Yeah.
Uh, sir, one, one other thing I would like to bring up is it should at the very bottom of all of this, when, when it's all said and done, if we're going to have to get rid of the gates, we won't reimburse for the money we put on the road. Because we put in thousands and thousands of money for that because we fixed the road. And we were, and there's a, there's a, a precedence that says, you know, if you, if you do something, uh, what's the name of it, Grant though?
I don't know.
Was, is-
Well, my attorney says we may have a case of detrimental reliance.
Yeah.
Whereas you rely upon somebody's information that you thought to be correct and you acted upon it. And we built a cabin and did a whole bunch of stuff for our detrimental reliance is headed toward $400,000. Plus other things like vexation of my soul, which costs money too. But I, I just not been done right. I come down here and everybody thinks that I just threw up these gates without talking to anybody. And that's not the case. The roads were terrible. I, I understand your point, but, but at the end of the day, until there's, I feel like until there's a public hearing, this road is still open. Whether you got to correct information or not, it's not my decision to make. I'm just saying, you know, um, I feel like they should have been here and, and, and I feel like, you know, you've left out all these other landowners and, and, and took into consideration the land that joins all that. I know you have a big portion, your cousin has a big portion, but at the backside of that, these other people have, have rights to that.
Scott, is today considered a, a meeting?
Yeah, we, we, today was a public hearing to-
Today is a public hearing meeting.
Get information, yes, sir. If they didn't get a notice, that, that concerns me.
Did anybody get a letter?
It was all sent out. I'll check on it, but, but that's what this is about, just to, to take in information on that.
What recommendation would you make Scott, like, uh?
For y'all to take it under advisement?
Okay.
I mean, I already get in my opinion on it.
That's, that's what I think. That's what I said a while ago. We talked, we'll, we'll go do some research on this and see and come up. We'll contact both parties. If you have to come back, we will, uh, and try to resolve this. Anything else? Thank both parties for being here. Give us a little time and we'll, we'll get them to work on it.
Appreciate the old time.
Okay. Scott, I'm going to ask for a motion to table this, to think, do I have a motion to table this for the closure of Mitchell Road?
I might get motion.
Second.
Larry, second. All in favor? Okay, let's go on to the next thing. Uh, next thing, I think the next two things go together, don't they not, Chris? We, we gave authority, I'll try to do it like this, we gave authority to Chris to hire a part-time, three weeks ago, a month ago. Uh, thought the guy was going to take it and he didn't and he's wanting to open it up again to ask if we can, uh, let him hire a part-time guy, guy, pay will begin at $10 an hour. And make a motion.
I second.
Ken has made a motion. Greg second. All in favor? Okay, that got both of those. Okay?
Well, we need to vote to-
To rescind it.
Rescind it.
Okay.
Because we did hire the boy, he just didn't show up right. Chris?
I'll make a motion and we'll rescind it.
A second.
Greg made a motion. Tim second. Rescind it. Uh, the next thing, recommendation to donate property to the town of Hackleburg. Uh, that's a little color I'll let Greg explain that.
There's a little section when Don was commissioner that, um, he had Judge Edward Hope to donate to the county just to put a community storm shelter on, it's an in-ground storm shelter. I would say it's probably less than half acre, right Scott?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Um, and, uh, you know, I, I had to do some maintenance on the storm shelter last year and I got a bear on him and, and, um, he said that they'd be willing to take it in, so they have, they have just asked us to, to give them a piece of property and, and they would maintain the storm shelter and stuff.
Is this one of these shelters, Scott, kind of like the one that I've got in one field that's landlocked? Does it remain our, does a shelter, shelter remain the county's or can we donate the shelter to the town?
I think it's, we can donate it all.
It's one, it's one that got down in the ground.
That's what I was thinking. Was it a famous shelter? It's one of the little turtle shelters.
Yeah, I, I, I really have no idea.
It's a little, it's once in the ground.
You can't do nothing for 30 years. I done checked into it. Yeah, nothing, so you might like to lease it to them for X number of years. But for 30 years, if it was famous, you can't do nothing with it.
I don't know if it was done with famous rap money or not. I don't know that.
Well, it's actually, whatever.
Yeah.
Huh? What was that called?
We can still donate them property.
Yeah.
And leases to everybody.
All right, oh, I need a recommendation to donate, because I have a motion. I'll make a motion. Greg made a motion?
A second.
Tim second. All in favor? And Scott said he would check on the, on the-
Legal part of it.
Okay. Next thing is a, from District Two, a recommendation to hire a channeler, as a full-time employee for District Two. Pay would be 1650 and will begin work on the 18th day of this month, April 3. I'll make a motion. Any question? I second. All right, Ken has made a motion. Greg second. All in favor? Next thing is a recommendation to in, to increase credit limits to vendors to 15,000. Scott, you want to explain that?
Uh, yes, sir. This, this, you came up with a couple of our vendors, but one specifically where we have like a $2,500 credit limit with them. And they'd asked about increasing it to 10 or 15,000 so that y'all could be able, when y'all went in and purchasing, we'll get the product and then, you know, send them a check. Uh, they just wanted to cover it. Um, I did speak with Tri-Green this morning and they went ahead and up ours to 10,000 anyway. Uh, but I think it wouldn't be a bad idea for the commission to have this to, to cover any of our vendors. Uh, they have their own amount, but if they need, you know, our approval saying it's okay, uh, to give up to 15,000.
Is this per district or is this, um, all five?
Yeah, it would, it would be all, all five. If they wanted to look at it per district, that would be great, but I think these vendors would probably look at it countywide and all.
You have my all, Mr.?
And I think, I think this has been a county, county policy for a pretty good while, Scott, that anything over 15,000, we have to get approval from the, from the board, anyway. So, uh, yeah. Okay. Need a motion for that. I made a motion.
In a second.
Greg made a motion. Ken second. All in favor?
Scott, did, the, you bid laws stuff, has it went into, it went into effect first of August, did it? So where we were at 15, now it's raised to 30?
That's right. I put us halfway. Okay, next thing is a recommendation to adjourn. I'll make a motion. Ken made a motion?
Wait a minute, is, um-
They're not on here.
They're not on here.
Wasn't letting, wasn't letting speak out for the-
Forgot about that.
Greg second. All in favor? We are adjourned and we'll let y'all.
This Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Gewin. We've been here in Gewin for 10 years, serving the needs of families like yours with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, um, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Gewin and Fayette. So come see me.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Gewin off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at 205-468-4625.
Uh, I'm Rick Chambliss with Marion County Funeral Home and Scribe Memorial Chapel in Russell, Alabama. This is Glenn Cochrane, our manager out here. Under the laws of Alabama that was passed in 2002, a funeral establishment has to be certified with the state and carry a certificate of authority before they can even talk to anyone when the time comes, it's guaranteed to be there.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gewin to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Hey guys, this is Nick Jackson at New Heights Church in Hamilton, Alabama. I just wanted to extend to you an invitation to come check out one of our services. We start at 11:00 a.m. on Sunday mornings and 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday night. We're all about abiding, arming, and awakening. Also, we have a nursery ministry and a children's ministry as well as functional on those Sundays. Our youth gather together on Wednesdays. Come on out and see what it's all about. We'd love to have you.
Hamilton Metal Roofing located at 291 County Highway 25 in Hamilton. We sell 29 and 26 gauge roof metal. We have all types of trim and screws for you to complete your projects. Call us with any questions. Open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Call us at 205-921-7100.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Hello, my name's Vince Hughes. I'm the owner and pharmacist at Hackleburg Pharmacy in Hackleburg, Alabama. We're located here on Highway 43 here at Hackleburg Pharmacy. We have state-of-the-art technology to ensure accuracy and efficiency to effectively help us provide you, the patient, with the best pharmacy services available. We carry a variety of products from a full line of vitamins to knives and knife sharpeners. We're open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. until 5:30. Phone number is 205-935-3392. We'd love to be part of your healthcare team.